There shouldn't be a seams, seams over here.
Okay, thanks.
Well, it's the irregular.
Oh, crap.
We're gonna call this meeting to order Thursday, January 7th. Fran, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfig.
Present.
Salcedo.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread, six present and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Hope everyone had a good Christmas. Is there any communication from citizens that's not already on tonight's agenda? Do you state your name and address?
Second Ward, Clark House. It's an old issue, but it needs to be brought up in this administration. To Muscatine City Council and to the people of City of Muscatine, the pit dog ordinance is a violation of law. It was a byproduct of insurance companies wanting the law to have excuse to delete such dogs from insurance policies. Since the Iowa legislature would not bow down to their request would be that the city would also ignore the same. The Iowa legislature knew that government has no constitutional right to pander to the requests of the insurance companies but regulate. In fact, the US Supreme Court has, in times past, agreed accordingly. If then, if the then city government had done its research, they would find the insurance companies needed an excuse to add no pit dogs and the city illegally complied. The law is breed specific. The law does not allow for breed specific in the language of my findings. Therefore, another violation of law, Iowa law. It took away the persons that had pit dogs or constitutional rights of the Fourth Article Amendment, denying government unlawful search and seizure was a unlawful search and seizure that was accomplished via an unconstitutional ordinance. The city of Muscatine went another step further to allow the then-police chief Gary Coderoni to sue his two pit dogs before, I repeat, before the last reading of the pit dog ordinance. Thereby, one was killed due to the fact he was trying to keep the city police from kidnapping his buddy. I saw that from the newspaper office in its entirety. It has found in the city library the change in the Muscatine Journal article that originally had the above police incident noted in Part 6 of this article. In the newspaper, the next day after, the criminal seizure was no longer in the newspaper sometime after it was inside, as I read it in the newspaper the day after. Does the city also have the right to cause unconstitutional deletion of an honest report of city activities as if the clause "freedom of the press" is no longer law? I believe the seizure of the pit dogs was to ensure a speedy court case to substantiate the ordinance. An ordinance that did not follow constitutional law, but some foreign due process of color law that's foreign to constitutional for the insurance companies who themselves sat during the third and final reading to witness its passage. It is now expedient for the city of Muscatine to rid itself of this law in its entirety for the sake of its citizens' rights constitutional. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes Items 6A, Items A through C, Items 12A through C, and tonight's bills totaling $2,265,809.57?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna move on to Item 7 on the agenda. Proposed vacation of the right-of-way remnant in City of Muscatine. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of a right-of-way remnant in the City of Muscatine. A vacation plat for 1.53 acres of right-of-way, which includes portions of Spring Street, East Fourth Street, and Poplar Street, which has been filed by the HNI Corporation. The HNI Corporation owns all of the adjoining property to the right-of-way being proposed for vacation. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for any public to make a comment if they'd like to.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second, your honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance vacating a right-of-way remnant in the City of Muscatine. A vacation plat for 1.53 acres of right-of-way, which includes portions of Spring Street, East Fourth Street, and Poplar Street, has been filed by the HNI Corporation. HNI owns all of the adjoining property to the right-of-way being proposed for the vacation. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, your honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, this is a roll call vote.
Oh, you're right, it is. Thank you, Fran. Santos?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Tom's gone. Alan?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Thank you. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the electrical upgrade project at the municipal airport. At the December 17, 2015, city council meeting, the bid was awarded to Volt Murray Incorporated in the amount of $39,269. Staff has reviewed the contract document and is recommending the city council take action to approve the contract and bond as submitted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Bob?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is a roll call vote, so we need to have Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Alan?
We should have a discussion first.
Okay. Does anybody want to discuss?
So I'll vote aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Alan?
Were we all in, were we all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, they already had. Now, we're gonna move on to Number C. Presented for city's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work for the Diana Queen Drive Extension Project and authorizing the final payment. On August 6, 2015, city council awarded the contract to higher construction in the amount of $277,679.78. Three contract modifications were written for the contract totaling $7,517.72. The final contract amount for the project is $295,272.69, which includes the value of the contract modifications, $7,517.72, and the value of the contract quantity overruns, $10,075.29. It was staff's recommendation that city council accept the completed work and authorize the final payment to the contractor. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Alan? Second?
Second.
Bob? All in favor?
I have a question.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Could you explain quickly the first two change orders that were listed, particularly the one about needing that concrete cut? As and after, needing the concrete cut?
We're all joining in pavement reinforcement. I think that's.
May I ask the council? The change order for the jointing?
Mm-hmm.
I think, yes. As it was designed, once we started to build it, the Streets Department asked that we add some jointing in it. It was a little bit more in keeping with the existing streets that were out there. And so we did.
Was that after it already been poured or prior to pouring?
No, that was prior to pouring.
Okay.
Yeah, that was all worked out, hashed out in the pre-con, pre-construction meeting. It was just something that wasn't included in the design.
As I recall, the document said something about a curb cut too? Or along the curb or something like that? I don't know if you normally separated the main pavement from the curb so that if one cracked the.
Well, I mean, what that, what that in essence did was add a joint at the gutter flag, instead of it being monolithic out to the center line, yes, so.
Is that something that will be addressed in the future, I assume?
Yes, definitely.
That's all. Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to set a public hearing on a proposed new lease agreement for the placement of communications equipment on the Clark House located at 117 West Third Street. The city currently has two cellular telephone companies using the rooftop of the Clark House. One of the leases is with US Cellular, whose lease runs through July 2, 2018. US Cellular is updating their lease agreements. The proposed initial term for the lease is for five years. A public hearing is required since the proposed lease extends for more than three years. This public hearing will take place on Thursday, January 21st at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Phil and Alan? Is there any discussion?
Is there an increase in fee under the new lease?
Initial year is a 10% increase, and then there's the annual escalator of 3% thereafter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the other cellular company, three-year or five-year leases too?
Oh, five years? Five years from the audience.
That's all I have.
Any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. The city has checking, money mark, and savings accounts with First National Bank, Central State Bank, and Community Bank. The authorized signers for the city's checking accounts are the mayor and the city administrator. With the new mayor taking office January 1, 2016, new corporate resolutions are required with each bank to update the authorized individuals on the respective bank accounts. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob?
Second, your honor.
Scott? Any discussion? It's a roll call vote. Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Thank you. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting the settlement agreement between the City of Muscatine and Communications Engineering Company. Is there a request to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Santos?
Aye.
Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement for final design of the Mussar Park to Wiggins Road Trail Project. A proposal was received from Lutz Engineering in the amount of $24,390 to finish the plan and profile sheets for the trail and develop the plan set through the Iowa Department of Transportation for construction bids. This work is necessary due to the rerouting of the trail and the donation of land from a benevolent landowner. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second, your honor.
All in favor?
Have discussion.
Discussion.
Or, I'm sorry, discussion? Anyone?
Were there other bidders?
As Jim's making his way up to the council, council approved the motion at the last council meeting. This is, there was a language correction in the, in the motion. We're bringing it back again tonight.
Oh, you approved this last night?
Approved it at the last council meeting. I just wanted to point out that there was a language and an error, a language error in the document, and we needed to correct it and bring it back tonight.
So, so the first thing I'll do is say, and that was, that was my mistake, so. Who are the other bidders? Yes, we, we did contact a couple of the firms. The closest one to what Lutz Engineering said to do it for was almost double. So. Any other questions?
When, when they're doing the, this, are they gonna actually, like, do surveying when they're setting this out? Or how do we know that they're gonna lay the trail out exactly where it's supposed to go?
It's, it, it, survey has already been done.
Okay.
By a surveying, licensed surveyor. This is to just get the plans going. And the reason that we are doing this is because the benevolent landowner that has donated this easement and temporary construction easement has set a time limit on that temporary construction easement, a calendar date. So, we can't. We need to be, use time as quickly and as best as efficiently as possible.
I'm good with that. I just, I was just gonna make sure.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
You might want to stay up there for the next item.
No. Take, have, have a seat.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a supplement to the NEPA study for the Mussar to Wiggins Road Trail Project. Due to the rerouting of the proposed trail, the Iowa Department of Transportation has determined the new route needs to have a Phase 1 archaeological clearance. Impact 7G, who was selected to do the, I'm assuming it's NEPA or NEPA?
NEPA.
NEPA clearance work for Grandview Avenue has submitted a proposal in the amount of $8,500 to perform the NEPA study. If this study could be completed quickly, the design for the trail can be completed in time for construction in 2016. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I'll take a second on that one.
All right. Alan's got first. Is there any discussion?
Your honor, just a quick note. Jim has arranged to have the firm here at next week's in-depth session to review the NEPA process, what it is, what it's about, and why we're doing these types of activities on Miss, excuse me, on Grandview and for the trail, so.
Because we have to.
Yes. In short.
In short?
Yep.
It's short and long.
This is so much fun.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now's time to ask the city council and the city administrator for any comments. Mike?
Yes. I don't know what the ordinances are about sidewalk removal of snow and ice from sidewalks. Could you illuminate me? Illuminate that question?
Will you adopt it? Oh, okay. Come on up, Andrew. Snow and ice has to be removed within, within 24 hours of the storm ending.
I know we have a, thank you. I know we have a system in place for grass cutting in the summertime. Is there a system in place to remove snow and ice? Because the percentage, when I've been driving around, is really high. And when I'm out walking, the only other people who are out walking are mainly from Clark House and the high-rise on Highway Avenue. Elderly ladies with their dogs who are susceptible to some severe injury if they took a flyer.
Absolutely. If you, if you have an address that's typically complaint-based, you'll notice on the, the monthly forms that council gets, you'll notice a number of the grass ones. And now during the winter, you'll notice that we have an abatement process for sidewalks.
We have a big crew.
It's on a complaint.
It's contracted.
It's complaint driven.
Typically complaint-based or staff reports it as well.
Because I counted 17 on my daily route.
Absolutely. But yes, you'll start, you'll see a number of those on a monthly nuisance abatement.
And I, and I had a, there was, there was a vehicle on, I, I think it was Mulberry, that it was obvious that the snowplow had gone around it numerous times. It had never been pulled out. And then I noticed there was a tag on the vehicle. Do we go through and routinely tag any vehicle or just ones that are complaint-driven again?
Without knowing the specifics, it's most likely the, you're supposed to move your vehicle every 24 hours. And when it's obvious, in that case. Now, we didn't have the snow emergency ordinance last time around in place.
Yeah, but it's been there.
But if you don't move your vehicle, it's obvious, and that allows us to be able to go in there and clean it.
Okay, but is that complaint-driven?
I'd have to.
Since we have.
Police department.
There we go.
Police department can certainly.
He's saying yes.
Typically is, but the complete, police department can. It could be staff or oftentimes reported by Public Works as well.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question on the sidewalk. Is, is that complaint-driven or the?
Sidewalk.
Not being shoveled?
Or, or staff-driven. Or if you get a complaint, we'll, we'll follow up on it and issue a notice to evade.
What would you say would typically be the time needed from the complaint being issued before the actual city takes some action?
I'll let Dave answer that.
My first time to, to address anything up here with the new council. We, and we typically do a lot of just drive-bys and mark it down and go do it. But we don't see everything. So we are dependent a lot on complaint-driven or at least call-ins to go out and address it. We inform the property owner. We give them 24 hours and then next, we don't give them much time, see? But there's no time for an official notice or all that stuff. And then we take care of it and, and bill it back out if it's not taken care of. Regarding cars in the way, if we get the indications, obviously, police department, we tell them. They're the ones that tag and remove. And that's usually at the cost of the car owner. But we are, we had a retiring community service officer last week, so we have some void in time, but we've not had any storms yet this week. So that's not been an issue, but they're coming. And ice is certainly one of those things that I'm even personally concerned about, both me and my wife, so. We've seen, we've actually experienced seeing an accident on Third Street Saturday, where the cars are pulled away from the curb. They're in the street and cars aren't getting around each other. And one went right in the back of another one, pretty substantially. So, a good thing no one got hurt. But it's a park, the parked vehicles are kind of crowding the streets now. So that's a big issue you've got that you need to be aware of as well, and the citizens do too. Anything else I can add to the discussion?
Well, I ask that simply because, you know, if it took a week for the sidewalk to be cleared, it's, it's.
We can't wait a week.
Yeah, you can't wait a week.
No, you just can't wait a week. Because that would be setting out those notices, official notices, and make it legal. We don't have time. We, we need to post it on the door until you get to this time to get it taken care of, or we're taking care of it for you.
Follow-up question, I guess, on the downtown area. A lot of times, the streets are plowed, but there's a windrow at the curb. And I've had difficulty sometimes when I park downtown, getting across that to get to where I'm going is, what's the city's action on something like that? Is that the store owner or?
That's something that the interim Public Works Director would probably handle. Well, I can, I can still point to the point. Across the street here, we have a row of parking meters, and I think it's a similar situation. I pulled up behind a nice lady. She got out to just put, to try to put money in the meter. She couldn't get across the snowbank, and she got stuck halfway through. And she fell over. So I, I actually got right over there to, to help her up. But, and she said, I'm just trying to put money in the meter because I gotta go run into the city hall to do this or that. So, I said, okay, give me your money, and I put it in for her. I says, okay, you've got 12 minutes to get out of that hole. But the situation is that within 24 hours, the next morning, all that snow was, there was a pathway between the ci, the, the parking area and the sidewalk so that people could travel at different intervals across there. I believe that is the, it's not gonna be right where you park your car. Maybe two or three cars or one car, three cars, whatever it is, ahead of or behind. You should see some sort of a break to be able to.
But that's by the business owner. Until the city has an opportunity to hire their, get their contractor down there.
Again.
They go in and out of the meters and, and clean it off.
Right.
And get rid of that windrow. But normally, it doesn't, it, they don't get the contractor out there that night after the snow.
I was wondering about the, the timing because, you know, the, in the downtown area, the, the business owner has no place to put the snow except out at the curb. And then if the city comes along or whoever and kind of adds to it, and then it's a couple of days before that's removed. It kind of puts the city and the business owner and the general public kind of in a bind on how you get across that windrow. I have a particular problem because I, you know, I have bad knees. And in this case, I was mentioned, if I hadn't had my vehicle to use it as a crutch, so to speak, I wouldn't have gotten across the windrow.
Well, I, I can't.
And I don't know if that's a long-term city issue. Years and years and years, whether, you know, it needs to be addressed somehow.
At budget time, we could talk about getting the.
That's a good idea.
Paying to have it done.
Yeah, we, we do pay a substantial premium to get folks in, the contractor in, and usually a couple of days after the event, depending on the event and the size.
Downtown area.
And just in the downtown area to come in and, and clear those, those paths. But it's typically, you know, we need, we'll be making several passes through there. So you don't want to get them in there any sooner, pay to have them come in there a second time around.
What I noticed is the, the, Second Street had been plowed, but I would think at the same time they plowed, they could take that windrow away, but. But apparently that's not the way it's done.
That takes end loaders and, and they've got to pick it up.
Yeah, they'll come in with additional equipment, come in typically overnight with all of their various equipment, put the, put the snow in a dump truck and haul it away.
Do we have a request to them as far, how soon do they get rid of that windrow once they put it there?
It's probably event, it's really event-specific in how much time.
We don't say, get it out of there in 24 hours or two days or two weeks.
Two days typically, yeah.
Two days.
Unless there's a, unless there's a pending snowstorm following, then it may not leave.
It is difficult to get over and put your money in the meter to climb over that, the big heap of snow. Do our parking meter attendants take that into consideration? Then if nobody had any way to get there without walking around in the street?
They could walk down to the end of the corner and come back and put the money in the meter if they wanted to.
But then they'd be walking in the street, which...
It's not necessarily...
Not the safest either.
What's ironic is, the one you mentioned across, it was in the parking lot across the street here. That was, that was, was that city?
Yeah. It was the city. It's all maintained by the city right here.
Right. So the city had the problem that they put the windrow there and didn't get rid of it.
Well, I set it up for you, Christie. It's a budget item.
Mike, did you have anything else?
Yes, please. We started testing at the landfill in September. Will we have an update at our in-depth meeting next week?
We have, per my weekly updates, we have a scheduled update in February with the city's engineering firm at the in-depth session.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, did you have anything?
I just wanted to welcome the two new council members and the new mayor for ensuing year, you and for two years at least, and the council members would be here for four, so...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get on Phil's comments.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Santos?
I have nothing.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alan?
Just say that I'm happy to be here and hope that I can serve the Fifth Ward effectively for the next four years, in a way.
Thank you. Greg?
Echo the welcome. Look forward to working with the council. And I need, we need new photographs, so... We'll need a group shot of the council and some individual headshots. So anybody's welcome to do that as well. We'll get those updated. And I just, we noted on here, if we can get everybody at the next meeting or the following meeting, depending on folk's schedule. I hadn't heard if anybody's going to be missing either of the next two meetings. So really want to get the whole group together, obviously, for a group shot. If everybody's going to be here, we'll plan on next, next week.
As far as I know, I'll be here the next two.
Sounds good.
Sounds like next week will work. Anything else, Greg?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
We're going to move to the potential closed session. Are we going to...
Closed session's not needed, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Taking over for Sama?